Good evening, welcome to the June 14th meeting of the Niskuna zoning board of appeals. Linda, will you go ahead and call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Ms. Pacheco?
Here.
Mr. Dolman?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Chairperson Hope?
Here. As you can see, we are a seven-person board and tonight, unfortunately, we only have six members of the board that are present tonight. So for all the applicants, when it's your time to come forward, in order to have your variance approved, you will need to get the approval of four votes. Because we have one less member tonight, you have an opportunity to decide whether or not you want to adjourn your matter until the next meeting when we'll have a full board. When you're called up, I'm going to ask you how you wish to proceed at that time. So you can proceed either way, you can have your matter heard tonight with the board that's present with the understanding that you need the four votes, or you can push it off until the next meeting. Okay. Linda, will you go ahead and call the first matter, please?
Appeal of Benjamin Twight for a variance from Section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 2041 Morrow Avenue, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district to construct a six-foot fence which exceeds the height limit in the side yard. Section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As proposed, a six-foot fence will be located in the side yard, therefore, two-foot fence height variance is required. Sixteen notices were mailed, zero responses.
I'd ask Mr. Twight to come forward. You're the first matter on the agenda. Sir, if you don't mind, sitting your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, sorry I'm late. 2041 Morrow Ave is the address, last name Twight, T-W-A-I-T, first name Ben, Benjamin.
Mr. Twight, I know you were here last meeting and this matter was tabled until this meeting.
Correct.
But why don't you go ahead and explain for the members of the board that are present, the basis. And before I say that, I already forgot, you weren't here at the beginning, but we only have six members of the board present tonight.
Okay.
You need four votes in order to have your variance approved.
Okay.
So you have a decision to make whether you want to proceed tonight, and I know you, it was tabled, so it was adjourned to tonight, or you want to carry it over to the next meeting. So how would you like to proceed?
Can I ask one question with that?
Sure.
It's just, I know a lot of what was, why we tabled it was, there was not enough kind of information last time with my neighbor's fence potentially not being up to code, and I know that he had received a notice, so I don't know if he's, I don't believe he's here today. I think he got pushed to the next meeting, and I don't know if it would be beneficial for me to wait to see if we could be at the same meeting almost, like...
That's a decision, sir, you're going to have to make. I really, I don't want to give you legal advice with respect to that. I see the logic behind that, but again, you have a right to proceed tonight or to wait to the next meeting, it's up to you. But again, you have, you have to have the four votes, so it's a little bit of a...
Right, and there's typically seven members or eight, like...
Seven members.
Typically, seven members on.
Right. So you'll need four votes tonight, you'll still need four votes in the next meeting, but you'll have out of seven members as opposed to six members.
Right, okay. And I guess my next question would be, when is the next meeting? Is it, is it the third Wednesday again, or...
July 19th.
July 19th.
July 19th.
Okay. Give me one second. You know, I would be at work that day, so I wouldn't be able to make it.
Okay, so why don't you go ahead and re-educate us as to the, your application, the reasons for the efforts you made to mitigate the need for it and why it couldn't be mitigated?
Sure, so I'm looking, the variance I'm requesting is a two-foot variance for about 20, 25 feet of fence that would be in my side yard. There's currently a six-foot fence that is, that was there when I purchased the house, so I was looking to just replace it as is. And the reason that I'm looking to replace it as six-foot fences, my neighbor has a six-foot fence that it would tie into right here, so I was hoping to, I was hoping to just keep it six feet for the way it looks. That's really, yeah, I'm sorry, I, what were the other questions that you wanted me to, what were the...
Well, I guess...
...mitigate, like...
Yeah. I guess, what is the reason that you need the six-foot fence at that location?
Sure. So, it looks mostly is what I am requesting it for.
So if I can, Laura, can you bring up the photograph of the fence, please? Yes. So that's the six-foot fence that exists today, correct?
Correct, that's the six-foot fence.
And I think that the last time that we were here, we had a discussion about keeping your children and pets in the backyard and things of that nature, correct?
Correct.
And privacy. And as a result of that, during our discussion, you indicated that there was actually a gate and that your fence was enclosed farther down the driveway out of, out of, out of the shot of this particular photograph, correct?
Correct, so yes, that was, like, between that meeting and this meeting, I had received the permit to complete the back part of the fence, so the part that I'm not requesting the variance for, and correct, there is now, you know, the fence, so my backyard is fenced in with a gate next to the house.
So the original application, the basis for the application being privacy and the protection of your children, pets, and so forth, that's been addressed by the placement of that fence and the gate that you got the permit for, correct?
Correct, yes, for me. Yeah, and what I would say is, like, I would want, as a good neighbor, to keep my, my neighbor's fence, my neighbor's yard fenced in, because if I were to take away, you know, like, and I know that it could be four feet, you know, but, you know, I don't want to take away this fence there and then make my neighbor's yard not fenced in.
Correct, and the last time we had a discussion about your neighbor's fence that's visible in that photograph as well, not being in compliance with the code as well, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So, and I think the last time, and what you alluded to during your original, our original discussion was, you weren't sure if that, your neighbor, you thought your neighbor may have another application in, for that, for next week, right, their variance application?
Yes, yes, I know, talking with them, they had received the notice.
Okay. I'm going to open this up, are there any other questions that the board has?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, good, Richard Green, good evening again.
Yep.
Clark, if I'm wrong, my memory was, there was also some discussion about the property line?
Yes.
And would update or additional information, if any, do you have with regard to that?
I don't have any, I did reach out to a couple of surveyors and I got quotes that was going to cost more than the materials for the fence, so I was, you know, I talked to my neighbor and I, when I replaced the fence that I did receive the permit for, I did move it a little bit back onto my property, but I did not want to, you know, spend the money for a surveyor that was going to cost more than the fence materials.
I appreciate your update.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, Chairman. Katrina Pacheco here. A couple of questions about the fence that appears between your house and the house to the left, if you're standing at the street. Is the intent to replace the entire length of that at the same time?
It was, but I, as I stated, I, after the meeting, I really had limited time to complete the fences, I was doing it myself, so I did go back to the building department with the new fence application for my backyard that I was not looking for the variance for. As I, for these few panels and stuff, I wouldn't have to rent, like, a dumpster and stuff like that, I could probably take care of this stuff myself, so that's why I went ahead with getting a permit for the backyard, so I could at least complete that, have it fenced in, and then deal with this at a later time.
So that, the back part that is not in question, that's been replaced, correct?
That had been replaced, yes.
What's the style of that fence?
It's the same, stockade, wood, six-foot, all the way down.
And in the intent, I just want to make sure, let me get this on record, that your intent is that the front part, the few panels that we're talking about that are in question?
Yes.
Would be the same exact panels?
Would be the same six-foot stockade from those, I still have one left over from what I had replaced, so...
Okay, and I just want to have a clarification from Laura, perhaps, were there any previous variances granted for that existing fence?
Um, no, there were not.
Okay, thank you. And do you know how old the fence is that...
Oh, no, I mean, I've only been there for, it'll be about two years in August, so I have no idea how old that is.
Okay, do you have a confirmation of the height of your neighbor's fence, the white one that we can see in that photograph?
I don't have confirmation, no. Like, did I ask them, like, is it the, I mean, the only confirmation I had is, like, looking at it, the top, was at the top of my six-foot panels.
And let me just ask questions about the, what's happening between the two houses. You did mention it was for privacy reasons that you wanted to replace that fence.
Yes.
You've already discussed the security of the backyard and that's been addressed with the fence you have built.
Yes.
So on the other house that we can see, at least in this photograph, there seems to be one upstairs window and a door.
Yes.
Is that a garage, do you know?
It is a garage, and that was part of the reason why I wanted to keep the six-foot fences there. They do utilize that door quite frequently for, you know, the trash and stuff like that. And, you know, the, if you look at some of the other pictures, you know, this is right up against my driveway, so we are in our driveway quite frequently and, you know, just, you know, I don't really know how to say it, but like, I love my neighbors, but I also, you know, every time you're out there, having to say, you know, hey, how you doing, hey, how you doing, it's like, you know, constantly is like...
So that describes what's happening on the neighbor's side, on your side, which I'm not sure if we have a photo of the side of your house, is there, are there windows or doors on your house?
Yes, so there's two windows, so there, there's a window on this room here, and then there's also, there's actually two windows that are the same size as that, and then there's one smaller window in the bathroom, that are, that all three of those windows are facing my neighbors.
Okay, so obviously, that's above the area that we're talking about, you're talking about privacy while you're on your driveway, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Twight, would you, would you agree that if your neighbor doesn't get a variance for their part of the fence and that has to be removed, that partially negate the whole purpose behind your request for the variance for this portion?
Yeah, well, yes, and I know that we had discussed that last time too, where, and I think that's why we tabled it, was because we weren't sure about my neighbor's fence, and I didn't want to go through with voting on the variance if we didn't, like, if, you know, all that stuff, I don't know.
Are there any other questions from the board? Hearing none, are there any members of the community that would like to speak for or against this variance application? Hearing none, is there anybody on the board who would like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve the variance as written. I find that the benefit can be achieved by other means, especially as the applicant has discussed with the fenced-in and closed-off portion that already exists. I don't find that this is an undesirable change in the neighborhood, especially as this is replacing an existing six-foot fence, and as this photo that's up right now shows, it's relatively obscured from the road, and additionally, it does provide some, some privacy for the neighbor that matches his other fence, but that's a whole other issue. I do find this absolutely is substantial, and we continuously do hold that this is substantial, there's no reason to think this has an environmental, adverse environmental impact, and I don't find that this is self-created. So on the balance, while it is relatively rare for me to vote yes for a six-foot fence, I would make that motion in this case.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second, Linda, we call the roll.
Mr. Latif?
Again, this is a tough situation. Very rare, we approve a six-foot fence to the front of the house, so my vote is going to be no, and the reason behind it, I don't like to set precedent to other people to come in and be able to ask for a six-foot fence in the front, and also the whole situation with the neighbor and so on, so I don't have access to know what's going on with the neighbors, but my vote is no.
Ms. Pacheco?
I also find that the benefit could be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. What I didn't hear were ideas about trying to mitigate the need for the two feet. I also agree that it is substantial, so I am also going to vote no.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yeah, this is, this is kind of a tough one for me. In addition to points made to my right, the one that's not overweighting the other points, but important in my mind is that there does not appear to me to, if this were to be granted, to result in an undesirable change in the neighborhood. So normally, all things equal, I am also normally constrained to stick with the four-foot fences, but in this case, for the reasons stated by those who have made the motion and seconded it, and also based upon my belief that it's not an undesirable change in the neighborhood, my vote is going to be yes.
Mr. Stein?
I don't think that this is going to have a detrimental effect on the community. I don't think it's self-created. I do think that there, there are other options, but there is a six-foot fence there as is now. I understand you bought the house that way, so my vote is yes.
Chairperson Hope?
I'm also going to be a no, I appreciate the applicant and the idea that the applicant is concerned for the neighbor's privacy and to his privacy to a certain extent. I think that there's other feasible means to achieve this without the continuation of the six-foot fence. With respect to an undesirable change in the neighborhood, the zoning code of Niskuna contemplates the six-foot fences in this location are undesirable to a certain extent, that's not my value judgment, that's the value judgment of the code, so I do find that, to a certain extent, every fence presents an undesirable change in the neighborhood, and I do believe this is substantial. I don't believe that there's any environmental impacts, and while it is, every application is self-created to a certain extent, I don't necessarily think that's dispositive, in my mind, the biggest factor is that there's other feasible alternatives to achieve the limited benefit that you're seeking of having some privacy while you're at this location on your driveway. So I appreciate you coming forward, I appreciate you taking the time to come two times down to the board, and I'm glad we got your, your fence up at the, at the other part, so unfortunately, your variance is denied.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, if we could have a numerical count on the record of yeses and nos?
The, the yeses were three to three, and you needed the fourth.
Yeah. All right, I appreciate your time, thank you.
When do we call the next matter?
Appeal by John and Karen Splendido for a variance from Section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 930 St. David's Lane, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to construct a five-foot high fence which exceeds the height limit in the front and side yards. Section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As proposed, a five-foot fence, five-foot high fence is located in the front yard along St. David's Lane and the side yard, therefore, a one-foot fence height variance is required. Eleven notices were mailed, zero responses.
Mr. Splendido, before you go forward with your application, as you've heard, we only have the six members, and I'm going to ask you if you'd like to make an election, whether you want to proceed tonight or you'd like to adjourn until the next meeting?
I'll proceed.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and, first of all, tell us your name and address, a little bit about your application, the reasons for it, the efforts you've made to mitigate the length in this case of the variance that you're requesting?
Okay. John Splendido, 930 St. David's Lane, lived in Niskuna for, since 2005, work in Latham, been treasurer at Niskuna Fire One since 2009, requesting a one-foot variance in what we consider our backyard, if you look at, I have a unique property, it's a very long parcel of land, my house is all the way in the back, we have no backyard, so what we, where I'm putting the fence is where what we use as our backyard, and almost anybody walking by would say that's my backyard. It does butt up against the neighboring property's backyards. My neighbors on that side would be able to put a six-foot fence there without a variance, but because of the unique way my house is situated, that is considered my side yard. I tried to mitigate the fence from coming into the, what's considered the front yard, but there's two large, healthy, mature trees there in the way from coming straight off the side yard corner, so I have to bump it out about 10 to 12 feet into the front yard. That front section of fence will still be 108 feet from St. David's Lane, and you can see in the pictures that it is quite a distance. And, and I tried to mitigate the impact of the fence by selecting a three-rail aluminum fence that is mostly see-through, I'm only requesting five feet to keep my dog safe, I think that's enough for my golden retrievers, four feet is just too easy for them to jump, and I didn't go for the max six-foot, so trying to mitigate as much as possible.
Thank you. Before any questions, Laura, could you, could you please let us know where the, on that map, where the variance is actually being requested for which portions of the fence? Or, I just wanted, Mr. Splendido, I just want to have confirmation that we're all on the same page?
From myself?
Not, not yet.
All right, sorry.
Well, I went a little bit far, but that's essentially the side yard that's cited, and this guy is the front. So the only portion of the property that's considered the rear yard is from this corner back, so this is the rear corner, these two are the, like, this guy and this guy are the rear corners, so you'd only be able to have a six-foot fence, you know, right back there.
Okay, and just for, for my edification, the neighbor's yard, if we had, if the fence went from the back two corners of the neighboring property to the back of the yard and across, that would all be within the, that would all be up to code?
Yeah, that's correct, because that, that 913 Morgan Ave is, Morgan Ave is on the right side of that 913 Morgan Ave, so that's all their backyard.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
May I? Mr. Chairman, good evening, sir, how you doing?
Pretty good, yourself?
Yeah, I'm doing all right. Richard Green, just out of the box, did you have a chance to speak with your neighbors whose backyard abuts the area where you're asking for the variance at 913 Morgan Avenue?
No, I haven't.
Did they, all right, did you talk to the neighbors in 901 Morgan Avenue?
No, I haven't.
And the lay of the land, when you're standing on St. David's Lane, looking at the side of your house, and then you're looking to the right, what's the, for the record, just what's the lay of the land, is it level, does it go up, does it go down?
It is, St. David's Lane lies below the rest of the property.
So your neighbor...
Uphill from St. David's Lane to where this fence is.
So your neighbors at 913 Morgan Avenue are at a lower elevation, correct?
Yes. My house is on the high point of that area of town.
And Mr. Splendido, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Mr. Splendido, the fence is currently up, correct?
No. I, that, those are just some sections I purchased for purposes of taking pictures for you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Yes, Chairman, I have a few questions for the applicant, Katrina Pacheco. In terms of the parcel, I know you said you've only lived there since 2005, do you know if the parcel was ever larger than that, when you looked at deeds or any of the previous history of the house?
My wife would know, I do not.
Okay, the only reason I ask that is, is trying to understand why the house is placed so far back from the road, but that's not, that's not something that you can control?
That, yeah, that's a landlocked area, that crisscross-hatched area there, so I heard rumors that long ago that was going to be some type of development or something, so that's, but that's...
Do you know, is that park area?
No, it's just a landlocked...
Okay, it's a privately owned parcel?
It's privately owned by a neighbor on Morgan Avenue.
Okay. And then relative to the mapped-out layout of the proposed fence, you come closer to the road off of that right-hand corner of your house?
Right.
Is there a reason you didn't go behind the trees?
It would block the entrance to our backyard, you know, what we, the town calls it my side yard, but what we call our backyard, I have a little pad, a pathway there and everything, and it would be, it would block it.
So there is a door close to that corner?
Well, we have a back door, but I have a slight walkway that leads up into like a patio area, and if I went the other direction, it would block the entrance to that.
Okay, and just one more question about that area, are there any underground structures that you're trying to avoid putting the fence over the top of?
Just the root systems for those trees, so I came out, you know, a couple feet off of those trees.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple questions for you, my name's William Stein, how are you tonight? I just want to kind of get the lay, as some others said, just the lay of the land, your garage that would be, is actually, would technically be in your rear yard?
Yes.
And it wraps around your house based off the driveway? So you have, you enter your garage basically through the official backyard, is that correct?
I can, yes, there's a door there.
Okay. So can you, about how far from your garage is it to the rear property? Um, so can you, about how far from your garage is it to the rear property line?
It's a steep downhill, but it's maybe four, maybe six feet.
Okay. So it, uh, would you say it's not very usable as a rear yard?
It's zero usability.
Okay. Um, I, I, someone that also has an oddly unique-shaped property, I do understand. So I just trying to get the lay here for yours. Um, so your, St. David's Lane is at the bottom here on this, on this sheet, correct?
Correct.
On, on that layout there? That would be?
Yes.
And you said it's about 108 feet?
108 feet from St. David's Lane to that yellow line representing the front of the fence.
Okay, so your, and your house is actually a few feet farther than that?
Yeah, maybe about 120-ish or so.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Actually, just a request. Uh, just, I want to make sure the notices went out and no neighbor, including 913 Morgan Avenue, responded? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions.
Yes, Mr. Splendido.
I'm very familiar with St. Davis. I live on Route 7. Um, so a question for you. If you going down to St. Davis, it's very hard. You got to keep your eye on the street there.
Absolutely.
Can you see that fence driving?
No. No, you'd have to be looked, staring at my.
You have to stop and stare at it to be able to see it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, now you lived there since 2005, if I recall?
I've lived in this unit since 2005, lived in this property since 13.
13. Um, you did mention that the neighbor has a six-feet fence. Where is it compared to your property?
I didn't mention that.
No?
Just respectfully, I, I don't know that he said that.
Oh, okay.
He said that it's his position.
Did you say they had a very, excuse me, I got you, Mr. Green. Did you say they had a, they didn't have a variance or something?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, um, 913 Morgan, 901 Morgan could have a six-foot fence on that same property line without obtaining a variance.
A variance, that's what you were referring to.
It's their true backyard.
Okay. Um, tell me about the level of the property. Is it all even where you put in the fence?
No, it, it goes up and down.
Up and down. So, so usually a, a true fence, this is, you could see through it, right? The fence?
Right.
Okay, so if you have a regular fence where you can't see through it, is the property, uh, when you're looking at it from St. Davis, even if you have non-see-through fence, can you see that without stopping? Because I'm just curious, is, this is far enough? And deep down, 120 feet to the fence or 108 feet?
108 feet to the fence. Yeah, if you're just driving by, you're not going to notice the fence. That's, you know, you have to actually be wanting to, you know, see what's going on on my property.
Okay, that, that answers my question.
In that picture there, you can see my daughter's standing behind the fence. So you can see her, you know, and that's a hammock behind the fence that you can see. That's how see-through it is.
Okay. And that one, you had to like stop and take the picture to see that?
I was standing in the room.
Yeah, okay. Well, this is a good picture. Thank you.
Mr. Splendido, there are no other fences on, uh, St. David's Lane, correct? Uh, facing St. David's Lane?
Um, there is one that I can see from my property. I don't know the name of it. Um, it's on the, it's right around that, that big S-turn bend. There's a house. Actually, I have pictures here if you want it.
Yes, if you could, that'd be great. We'll include these in the record. Make these part of the.
Took this this morning.
Thank you. And is this?
This is on, right on St. Davis. This is also a raised, the house is raised off the road similar to mine. But that is a picture taken from St. David's Lane of this, you know, this is the view from St. David's Lane of this house. And that's a six-foot fence facing St. David's Lane. You know, it is a good distance from St. David's Lane, like mine would be. Mine's five foot.
I, I guess my, my concern, uh, Mrs. Splendido, is if your variance was granted, that would run with the land. It would be a permanent. Um, so my concern, I, and I appreciate that you've taken steps to mitigate the need for the variance by making it, um, see-through. And I appreciate the distance, but the one thing that I would be concerned about is that someone could replace it with a, um, uh, you know, a wood panel fence that would change, change the look of, uh, St. David's Lane.
I would still say that's 108 feet back. And if my house was in a normal, si- normal situated spot on my property, that would all be backyard.
All right, I appreciate the, uh, the distance and the, the unique nature of your property. Uh, Mr. Hess, a question for you. Is there, is there any way to make a motion to condition it on a particular type of fence?
So, yes. The issue is, it's difficult for the town for enforcement in the future fight because typically the fence variance would, well, definitely runs with the property, but future homeowners may not hold the original variance as due for granted. So the real answer is yes. It could create some issues in the future, but it may not.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board?
Just a quick, quick question. Uh, tell me again, why can't you put a four-feet fence in there? What was the reason?
Dogs.
You have dogs, and they can jump over the four feet?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Cute dogs.
They are.
Are there any other questions from the board? Are there any, uh, members of the community that would like to be heard for or against this application? Uh, having heard, uh, none, um, would anybody, would any member of the board be interested in making a motion?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion. Uh, I motion to, uh, grant the variance as, as written. I think the, uh, the benefits can't be achieved by any other method due to the way the situation is, the, the property is situated. Uh, I don't think that your fence would have an undesirable change to the neighborhood. Actually, I think it would help preserve the neighborhood by keeping those trees and keeping the, uh, the good, the, the amount of greenery around your, your home and the neighborhood intact. I think, you know, it is a substantial request, but it is one foot. Um, and I do appreciate the need to keep dogs in, and, and I, I've had dogs jump fences before. So I, the one fence, the one foot does make a difference. Um, and I do not think this will have a severe, uh, physical or environmental impact. Again, I, the house being turned the way it is, is now through no fault of your own. And, uh, you know, therefore leaves you in a situation where your side yard is the only usable yard you really have. So I would, uh, I would motion to, like I said, grant the approval.
Uh, there's a motion pending. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm going to second the motion, but again, I'm going to go back to the question to make sure, uh, that we only allowing the five feet for the see-through, even though, uh, it might bypass us somehow in the future. But, uh, part of the second motion, I want to, uh, make sure that we put that on the record. And also I want to, uh, uh, make sure, I think the, the applicant is really trying to make that fence is, fits the neighborhood. And again, as we discussed, uh, you really can't see that fence from the road except if you stop by. So for all the reasons Mr. Stein mentioned and a couple of things I mentioned, I second the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't believe that this, that, that the original motion would have to be amended. On, I, I agree.
Confirm that's the case. Mr. Splendido, your application may turn on the issue of whether or not you're going to stipulate that your variance includes language that reflects the actual fence type that you want to put in. So are you amenable to this board amending the motion so that it stipulates the five-foot fence will be the, uh, black see-through iron fence or whatever, the, um, the fence that you proposed? So we can work out that language if you're amenable to the idea.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so procedurally, um, there's a motion pending. Uh, we would need a motion to amend. Then provided we have a vote on that motion, and then we could make a vote on the motion as amended.
Okay, so is there a motion to amend Mr. Stein's pending?
I make a motion to amend it.
Okay, so Mr. Latif has made a motion to amend. Uh, Mr. Stein's motion as outlined, uh, by Mr. Hess, is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Okay, there's a second from, uh, Mr. Dolman. Uh, Linda, can you call the roll?
Okay. Vote on the amendment.
Yes, so that's, we're, we're, we're voting on the amendment, uh, to Mr. Stein's motion.
Mr. Chairman, should we state what the, uh, amendment that we're voting on is?
Well, I indicated it was as articulated by Mr. Hess, but the, uh, amendment, as I understand it, is to, uh, amend Mr. Stein's motion solely to stipulate that the, uh, fence that has been proposed by Mr. Splendido, which is the see-through metal, um, metal fencing material would run with the land, and that would be part of the, um, uh, variance.
Yes.
So that's my understanding?
Yes.
So can we have a, a vote on the motion to amend?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Pachico?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairperson Hoak?
Yes. So the motion was approved unanimously to amend Mr. Stein's motion. So Mr. Stein's motion as amended, um, do we have a second to that?
I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
For all the reasons you previously stated?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, Linda, can we have a, a second vote on the motion as amended?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Pachico?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Uh, yes, for the reasons stated, and also it's important to me that, uh, I have, uh, heard, uh, no, uh, neighbor, uh, in opposition. And says neighbors have had, had, had noticed, and should they wish to have said anything. They're not here. The gentleman's here. No one's opposing it. You can't see it from the road unless you park. By the way, I did the site visit. I stopped, and you have to stop. You got to look. It's got to be the only thing on your mind. Also, significant in my mind is the fact that actually your house isn't improperly situated. It's the rest of the world that was built around it. Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Uh, yes, for all the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hoak?
I'll vote yes on this motion. I would note that I still find, um, that all fences that request this type of variance, to a certain extent, present an undesirable change to the neighborhood. And I do believe the request is substantial. That notwithstanding, uh, because of the unique nature of this particular property, um, and where it's situated relative to the road, and the applicant's, um, efforts to mitigate the need for, uh, the variance, um, balancing the factors, um, this presents a unique application to this board. And, uh, I vote yes as a result of that. So your, uh, variance application passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
You did say it. When do we call the next matter?
Appeal of Todd Birmingham for a variance from section 220-4, section 220-13, Schedule IB of the, and section 220-15D of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 2260 Pine Haven Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to, to construct a 12-foot-by-14-foot deck partially within the rear yard setback. Section 220-4 defines a corner lot as a lot at the intersection of two streets. The property is the corner lot at the intersection of Pine Haven Drive and Fernwood Drive. Also, each street line shall be considered a front lot line. The interior lot line must nearly, most nearly parallel to the rear of the principal structure shall be deemed the rear lot line. The other interior lot line shall be deemed to be the sideline, and the rear and side yard requirements shall be calculated accordingly. Section 220-13, Schedule IB, requires a 20-foot minimum side yard setback. Section 220-14D states for corner lots, front yard minimum shall be required for both yards facing the street on the corner lot. Side yard minimum shall be required for the remaining two yards for properties located in the R1 and R2 zoning districts. As proposed, the deck would be located 15 feet from the property line. Therefore, a five-foot setback variance is required. Nine notices were mailed, zero responses.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Birmingham, um, before we start, um, you've heard what I've told the other applicants tonight about us only having six members of the board. Do you want to proceed tonight, or would you elect to, uh, put your matter over until the next meeting?
I'd like to proceed. That's fine.
Okay. Um, with respect to the, um, the map that's up there, Mr. Birmingham, will you first, uh, let us know your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Todd Birmingham, and my address is 2260 Pine Haven Drive. And, uh, I live in a 1968 home, and we're the second owners. So we've been there since December 2001.
Okay. Before you start, Laura, uh, am I correct that there's two separate variances that are required, uh, on this application?
I think it's just the one, it's just a lot of different code to kind of come to the fact that.
The five-foot setback, that's the only variances?
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, okay. Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Birmingham, why don't you go ahead and let us know, uh, the reason for your application, um, what efforts you've made to mitigate, uh, your, your variance request?
Thank you. So I'm on a corner lot, which has, is peculiar a bit. It has a, a different shape. So my backyard, uh, as you can see, my home is 27 feet from the neighbor's property, which isn't much of a backyard. I think, uh, we were delighted when we got the home, December 2001. We still really enjoy the neighborhood. But I think over time, you start to realize it's limiting because we don't have that traditional backyard, which, um, we have a big side yard, but it would, you, you're not going to ever put a deck there. And also it would still run into a variance issue anyway. Um, so it's really, um, you know, this was in place before we, uh, moved in. Obviously, we're the second owners. And the reason, uh, we're, we want to do this is, um, I have three kids. One's a senior at Niski, another is an eighth grader. They're both girls, and I have a fifth-grade son. And my daughter's going to go to SUNY Geneseo, play basketball next year. And, uh, you just want to go outside a bit more and enjoy dinner. I mean, that's basically it. We want to enjoy the fresh air and have a backyard where you can do that. We don't have that traditional large backyard, but that's what we're looking at. You know, there is a, I mean, we have, um, so there's, uh, there's a door in our kitchen. When you open the door, uh, there's a concrete slab, and you walk down the steps. And we have this little concrete slab. And you can step off of it and be on the grass, but it's not, you're not really going to probably line up for dinner on a concrete slab like this. We just wanted a more formal way to enjoy dinner outside and have the fresh air. And my wife has, uh, thought that would be a nice, uh, thing for our family. And, and that's what we're looking to do, is just have, uh, a deck like a lot of other homes do, except the fact that we just happen to be on a corner lot.
Mr. Birmingham, uh, would you, would you mind, uh, uh, the map isn't, I'm, I'm a little confused by the map. Why don't you orient exactly where's the front of your house on that map?
Sure. So my, if you're coming down Fernwood, my driveway would be here. You'd see three basketball hoops. And then if you come to the front, this right here would be the front of our house. So this is Pine Haven, so our house is 2260 Pine Haven, and our driveway faces Fernwood. This is the front of the house. So we're, this, basically, this would be the kitchen. And you open the door, you get onto the concrete, walk way down. And we're thinking of, uh, so when you open up, it's not a sliding door, it's a regular door. Now you would just step onto the deck. So basically, the deck would go a little bit to the right, probably steps down. And then it would go to the left, almost by the kitchen windows. Like, right before the kitchen windows, it would stop. And again, it would be a five-foot variance. It would just be 12 by 14. Um, so, uh, there is a big tree, like, I, I don't, I don't have a picture, but we had a large tree. I don't know how old it could possibly be, but if you were coming from Fernwood, you would still see it probably, you'd still probably see the deck, but you certainly, it would be concealed at some level, at some level. see the deck, but you certainly, it would be concealed at some level, at some level it would be, and the foliage from my neighbor's property, we've known them since we, since we moved in, it's super high, so, I mean, they, they would probably see it, but
Okay.
It's certainly...
Thank you, Mr. Birmingham.
Yeah, it's a pretty well, when my, when my dad was, he, 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 uh, helped us join in our search for a home back in December 2001, he was a state entomologist for 38 years, and he's like, "Look at that tree, it's been there 50 years, look at that tree, there's another tree," so he, uh, he grew up on a farm in Western New York, so he, it's, it's an older neighborhood, so I think he appreciated that, that it wasn't something that was just built, that we had the foliage, we had the large trees.
Mr. Birmingham, a- a- as I'm facing the, the house, is this bit kinda off to the right, is that, is that a garage?
Oh, yes, so, right here is, um, so when you come up, this would be, I guess, right here is the driveway, this is a garage.
Okay, so, so the deck, so the deck would be kinda tucked into the corner?
Yeah, so the deck, the, the deck, so, what's interesting...
Mr. Birmingham, will you do me a favor, can you grab the mic just so everybody can hear what you're, ah, I should've said it earlier. That'll give you more flexibility to... The emcee that...
It works. Yeah. So, right here is the garage, and i- i- you know, now that I look at this, I guess I have to bring up something else, it's the first time I'm kind of noticing it, 'cause I think this is what you're wondering. At some point, the prior owners', um, last name Strickmans, good people, I, I, I don't know if you've ever heard, I think, I think one of them got involved in zoning, actually in Schenectady, believe it or not, um, there is a solarium, we didn't put it in, it looks like it was, at some point, there was a solarium put on the house, I have no idea, but, so like, when I'm looking at this, this looks like a garage, it looks, this, this piece right here, there, there's like a solarium, unless it's here, but I'm assuming it's here, so there is some solarium, when we looked at the house, there's plants in it and all that, so, so basically, wherever this garage, if this is the garage, I'm assuming this piece right here is this little solarium piece, so it goes, so the deck kind of, um...
So what you're saying is that that corner may, or may not be actually the primary structure?
I, I mean, now that I'm, I didn't even realize it till you said it, but like, the deck runs over the solarium bit, like when you come down the stairs, there's, there's like a little solarium inlet right here, so, somebody told me they thought it was added on to the house, I, I guess it might've been.
Okay, and, and you indicated there was an existing concrete pad, do you
Yep.
Describe exactly where that concrete pad is?
Yeah, so, uh, if you exit by the kitchen door right here, uh, the concrete pad is probably maybe about the size of that table, and then you would just s- walk down the steps and the concrete pad runs, i- i- it, uh, it runs probably right about there, and then it curls around to the, uh, curls around to the, uh, driveway, so it's just, it's a very, it's, it wouldn't be that thick, the, uh, the top where you come out of the kitchen and step onto the platform, that would be probably about the size of a, a table, maybe about the size of that, but the concrete slab is very
Okay.
Not much.
Mr. Birmingham, um, with respect to Lot 132, what's your neighbor that lived there? What's, what are their names?
Yeah, Joan and Mike Falacaro, and we've known them since we moved in, we're very...
I, I assume that you've had discussions with them about this, uh, deck that you're proposing?
Absolutely, and they, they, they would like dinner when we get it, so, they're, they're, they're fine with it.
Has there been any other neighbors that, uh, have come up to you and asked you any questions or objected to your proposal?
There hasn't, no.
Thank you, are there any other members of the board that have questions?
Yeah, what's, what's the deck gonna be made of, give me a picture?
Yeah, it's gonna be, it, it's gonna be Trex, and it's going to be, my understanding is there's three tiers of it, we're gonna go with the highest end tier, uh, and Ranier, I think that will be, uh, the color, and instead of lattice on the bottom, it would be boarded, it would be more boarded up, we think that might, uh, be better, and, um, we're, it just, we're, I guess we're looking at something that maybe is going to come in beautiful and that we don't have to maintain with, uh, over the years, my understanding is the Trex lasts a very long time, so...
Trucks, great, uh, any lighting?
Uh, we don't have any plans to do that, there is already a light, like, on the side of our house at night that pops on, so, I think if we did anything, if the deck, y- y- you know, the deck in the 12 by 14 frame, I mean, you could probably put something on the deck itself, you know, uh, just a stand-up light if you wanted something, I know some people put the things up with the bug zap a little bit, if that gives you, uh, if you don't wanna get eaten, so...
And how about the neighborhood, are there other decks in the general vicinity of your home?
Yeah, I mean, there is a deck, um, on, uh, Fernwood, which is very interesting, is...
Just are there other, I don't mean to interrupt, but I am...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Are there other decks in the general vicinity of your home?
There is, just two doors down, yep.
Didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, it's good.
Just getting a nice record.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions, um, is, would it be possible, so I do see that based on this line, it looks like the top of your house is 29 feet from the, the back line?
For some reason, I think it's possible maybe past the windows of the kitchen, it's actually 29, for some reason, that word, that number 27 is written over this side where the door to the kitchen would be, um, I don't, I can't recall putting that number in over the years, I don't know if that, I, I assume like when we pulled the deed, it was already on there, that number, so it might be just the way the house is situated is that, could it be the way it was built, that it's possible that it's 27 feet here and 29 feet there, but if you get back that far, they have the, um, the Time Warner and the electrical wires coming up top, so, I think it, you know, I don't know if you really wanna eat with wires hanging over the top of your head, so that's kind of...
So just to clarify?
Yeah.
It wouldn't be feasible to move the deck farther down to have less impact on, on the, how much of a variance you would need?
Yeah, I think it would be not as feasible because of all the things running over the top, I don't think it would be as, as, as good a thing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, does the board have any other questions? Uh, is there any member of the public that wishes to be heard or, uh, for or against this application? Having heard none, uh, is there any member of the board that would like to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll go ahead and make a motion, Mr. Chairman, uh, I don't believe that this, the benefit of, uh, of having this, that can be achieved by other means, especially considering the, uh, electrical concerns that, uh, the applicant just brought up, uh, I don't find that this would be an undesirable change in the neighborhood, especially, um, I know the neighborhood, and I, I've, with the mitigation of that tree, uh, I think it's, it's not gonna provide an undesirable change, it is a substantial request, a five-foot variance is substantial, I don't see any reason to believe this would have an adverse environmental impact, and while this was self-created, uh, this is, that is not, um, on its own, um, determinative, and on the balance, I would vote to, uh, I move to, uh, approve the variance as submitted.
There's a motion pending, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I move in second.
Thank you, there's a motion pending, which has been seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Having, uh, he, uh, having heard no request for discussion, uh, Linda, will you go forward and, uh, call the roll?
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna vote yes, uh, for all the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Uh, it's important to me that, uh, notice was given to the neighbor and your testimony, uh, definitely helps, uh, me in my consideration, the fact that, um, your neighbor is in accord with your, uh, request, uh, in addition to it not being an undesirable change, actually it may be a desirable change to the neighborhood, as you've described it to us with the, again, my words now, yours, upscale type of deck that you're placing on the, a back of your home, should your application be granted, so I vote yes.
Mr. Stein?
Uh, as Mr. Green said, I do think it would be a, a nice change to the property, and I can definitely respect the, as the desirous children get older to be able to spread out the, the, uh, the growing in the house as much as you can, so I vote yes.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, for all the reasons stated, Mr. Birmingham, your, uh, variance is approved unanimously.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Enjoy your deck.
We will, thank you so much, my wife will be happy.
Linda, can you call the next matter, please?
Appeal of Don and Molly Anthony for variance from Section 220-18B3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 918 Birchwood Lane, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density resident, residential zoning district, to construct in addition to an existing shed partially within the side and rear yard setbacks, Section 220-18B3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building, as defined, major accessory structures are detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet, the shed with the proposed, the shed with the proposed addition will measure 258 square feet and is a major accessory structure, Section 220-13 Schedule IB establishes a side setback minimum of 20 feet and a rear setback minimum of 25 feet, as proposed, the shed will be lo- located 7 feet from the side property line and 10 feet from the rear property line, therefore, a 13-foot side yard setback variance and a 15-foot rear yard setback variance are required, nine notices were mailed, zero responses.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Anthony, um, will you, uh, uh, state your name and address for the record?
The name is Donald Anthony, Anthony's the last name, and the address is 918 Birchwood Lane.
Mr. Anthony, as you've heard me, uh, say all night, um, you have an election to make, would you like to proceed or hold your matter over for the next meeting?
I will proceed.
Okay, thank you. Um, why don't you go forward and tell us about your application, uh, the reasons for it, and the efforts you've made to, uh, mitigate the, uh, size, uh,
Yeah.
Of the variance?
I think if you've got, uh, that shows kind of the, uh, the, the overhead view that, I don't know if you can go forward, is, does it show the, uh, the photograph of the shed, just to give a sense of the, yeah, so that's the shed that was there, we've been on the property for 25 years and that shed was there when, you know, when we bought the property, um, the, what we're looking to do basically is pull the front of it out and, you know, to basically double the size of it by pulling the front out and filling it in, um, it was, uh, it's a unique, uh, custom construction, so to do that requires, um, you know, um, skilled labor that, uh, we're looking at using the, um, local, um, you know, it's a local craftsman, uh, innovative contracting with Arnie Weis, Weis, uh, the, the reason we're looking for to increase the shed size is in part because of just really looking, the, the thing that kicked it off really was trying to get a full-size, uh, snowblower, I've used a, um, snow thrower for a number of years, it's actually, uh, had it for over 25 years, and that's managed in, uh, uh, the type of snow conditions we used to have, but as I'm aging, it's getting tougher to use a device like that, so I'm looking to get a, you know, an electric, uh, full-size snow throw, snow blower, and the first thing you run into is where am I gonna put it, we have a, a one-car garage, you put the car in it, and a few other things, and it's, it's pretty full, so you'd like to have something that you can put in the shed during the, uh, the summertime. The shed looks like an, uh, you know, as, as we've aged, some of the reason we've needed extra space is, uh, for things like, um, you know, we used to have a wheelbarrow in back of the shed, which you can put things in, and at this point, I'm really not able to lift a conventional wheelbarrow anymore, so I have to use a wagon, and, um, so the wagon ends up in the shed, there's a few other things in the shed, so it's, it's kind of at a point where it's, it's tough to put more things in the shed to get a full-size snowblower in there, uh, so that's really some of the, the things that's motivated us to try to say, can be, try to, uh, increase the size of the, the shed. In terms of the, the location, it is, you know, it, I'm not sure if those were normal standoffs at the time the shed was originally constructed, um, it does require variance to get, uh, because of the standoffs, I think it's 10 feet in the back and 7 feet on the side, as you can see, the tall, the tall trees on the side, that's from our neighbors who would be most affected by this variance, and, uh, they already have a privacy, uh, you know, the, the evergreen trees there to act as a privacy fence, they have an in-ground pool on the other side of those trees, so they, they put those in for their own privacy. There's, uh, as you, our other neighbors really don't see that shed from, you know, the neighbors in the back, um, Chris Smith is, uh, he's got quite a few trees in his backyard, so he doesn't really see that at all, from the road, you can just barely see it through, you know, the, uh, from where our driveway goes up, there's a small place where you can see the shed from the road, but the, the change of it will be just to bring that shed front just a little bit closer to the road, so you really don't see a difference from the roadside. And from our neighbors to the south, they will see, um, they really don't see that shed, it's kind of on the opposite side of them, from where they are, they have to look across our yard, and they've got a few trees that are blocking the view of that. Trying to think, something else?
We don't, we don't wanna take down any trees.
Mrs. Anthony, if you wanna, if you wanna come up, we'd love to hear from you, just...
I can't stand there that long.
That's okay, we can get you a microphone if you like, but we'd like to know your name and address for the record.
I am Molly Anthony, I live at 918 Birchwood Lane in Niskuna. Other than the Bridlevale bush, which we transplant, that's right in front of it, we really don't wanna take down any trees or flowering bushes that are growing along in the back, and the most important thing is that we wanna preserve the charm on that shed, when we bought it, it had a little D and an M on the front door, and it was Dan and Michelle, and we got Don and Molly, so our contractor can do the exact same thing, but just bring it forward, and if I can show you a picture, which I don't have a lot of copies of, I only have one, but, uh, this was from malls to the street, so that's, that's what you'll see from the street, and it should look exactly the same.
Uh, Mrs. Anthony, do you mind if we keep that copy and make it part of the record?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can...
Thank you, I'll, I'll, I'll pass it down.
Trust me, you trip.
And, uh, we talked to all the, you know, neighbors in the front, back, and the sides, and that, they all have no objection, and actually, one of our neighbors, a diagonal, a diagonal neighbor who, uh, received the notice for us, even, um, he wrote a letter for us saying he had no objection.
So why don't you hand that to the clerk and we'll make that part of the record as well? And Linda, if you wanna read that for the, uh, the board real quick?
To whom it may concern, Nancy and I are in favor of Don and Molly Anthony receiving their variance to expand their shed, from Brad Spooner at 921 Birchwood Lane.
Thank you.
And I have, sorry, I, I have an approval, but it's on an email from the neighbors, the, the Freely's.
Where the Freely's live?
Freely's are adjacent to our property on which side?
The south side.
South.
Okay.
That's the Hoffman's.
So that would be on the opposite side?
Yes.
Okay, um, Mr. Anthony, uh, Ms. Anthony, you're welcome to stand, but if, if you feel more comfortable, feel free to sit, we can always get you a microphone, um, Mr. Anthony, so my understanding is that you're maintaining, y- you're keeping this structure and just enlarging it, moving it closer towards, or expanding it towards Birchwood Drive, correct?
Yes.
But you're keeping the original footprint of the original structure, is that accurate? You're trying to preserve as much of that shed as possible?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, it's not gonna change in height or materials from what is reflected in that picture, other than it's going to obviously expand in size and move closer towards your house and towards Birchwood Drive?
Yes.
Okay, are there any other questions from the board?
If I may, uh, Richard Green, when you, when you move it forward, are you gonna, could you describe for us what the front is going to look like, I heard the description of the, of the, uh, the D and M letters, but if you could just fill in for me, uh, which, what, what the plan is?
Our, our hope is to keep the same doors.
Oh, okay.
Yes, our contractor has assured us he can give it the exact same look on the front.
Is it going to be the same color?
Oh, yeah.
Yep, and, and the, uh, the roof?
We have a roofed house. It matches.
Sure. And the roofing, is it going to be the same type of roofing?
I'm not sure he can exactly match the color, but it will be close.
Very good. Thank you.
They're just, they're conventional, they're chickens.
Are there any other members of the board that have questions?
Oh, yes, Chairman. I have a few questions for the applicant. As you've stated, you want to expand this shed, this pre-existing shed to house a snowblower and probably some other tools. Uh, did you consider expanding the garage?
We can't, uh, if you, the, the extra photo that was added in shows we can't expand our garage to the, um, to the side because of the standoff. And we can't expand it to the back because there's actually a small room in the back of it. The, the original, our understanding was the original, uh, owners had a pavilion behind the garage and then they, eventually they dropped the walls and it's actually a room back there.
Okay, and, uh, sorry.
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
There's a, this wide chimney back there in that room behind the garage, brick chimney. So that's, it would be a big deal to tear that down.
Yeah, we'd actually, we'd have to tear down the tree too.
Okay, and that's to the backside of the garage? Okay. Uh, and you said just a moment ago, you couldn't, you wouldn't be able to expand to the north side to the left because of the setback?
Yeah.
Um, and I just want to understand from the application, uh, plan that shows something that may have been done earlier? There's this new structure, I'm not sure if I'm reading it correctly, the kind of crosshatched?
Crosshatched one is that is an extension to the porch, which is in its completion stage. It's now.
So that is just a porch? That's not a building?
No, that's just a, uh, it's, it's connected to the rest of the house. It's just a screened in porch.
Mrs. Anthony's provided us with a copy of the picture of the porch, which, if you don't mind, we keep this, we'll make this part of the record as well.
Yes, but this unfortunately doesn't show the shed, which is over here.
Okay.
I'm terrible.
Yeah, we have two, two photographs have been presented by Mrs. Anthony for, uh, consideration. I will pass that along and we'll make that part of the record. You know, you say you're terrible at photographs, but family looks like they're pretty good at design, so.
Uh, so I still had a few more questions. And thank you for the photographs. In terms of the water coming off of the roof, uh, currently it seems like it sheds into your yard and towards your neighbor's yard, assuming that it's going to be the same form and the same, uh, dripping there, is, uh, what's the way the land falls in that direction? Is there any concern about water going into the neighbor's yard?
No, it's pretty level back there and, um, back there, the soil is pretty sandy, so it just falls down. It doesn't, uh, it doesn't pool up or, you know, stream and, uh.
Okay, so it is not anticipated that, uh, the additional roof area will not contribute to water damage, let's say on a neighbor's or in your own yard? And, uh, just clarifying again, uh, based on this plan, the garage is attached to the house, correct?
Yes. So that, that's why we really can't bring it forward. And you really can't put it to the back either.
Thank you.
I have a quick question too for you. Would it be possible to use that room in the rear of your garage for additional storage?
It's already filled with a lot of stuff. It's, it's kind of like, I, I use it, um, it's, you know, teed it with the gas heater because it's separate from the rest of the house. It's got its own, uh, you know, its own separate heater. And so we use that for storage and, uh, I use it kind of as a back room, sort of my meditation room.
Understood.
The only entrance to that back room is from the garage and it's a door that's about this wide and it has a lovely creek, but there's no other entrances like to roll a snow thrower in or something.
So it's not very viable to get a snow blower through a door?
It's, it's one of those things. You can't get anything unless you can disassemble it. You can't get anything in or out. You know, I tried to get a couch in there and unless you got maybe like a folding futon or something, you can't, you can't get it through that door.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Just, uh, one quick question, Mr. Chairman. I know, uh, we asked that question, Ms. Pacheco, about the water, um, issues. So, uh, this shed's going to be bigger?
Yes.
And I know you said it's sand there. How far is that, once you build it, how far is it from the back of your house and do you have a basement there?
I, I have a basement, but it's about, uh, 40 feet if you go back to the, um, um, the overhead view. It shows from where it is, the, the basement is over back towards the, you know, from, from the shed, it goes over to the garage and the porch and then there's the house. So there is a basement in there, but the shed's really far enough back where it shouldn't impact.
So it should not affect your basement with water drainage?
The way the land lays is the backyard is relatively level. I think they probably, the previous owners probably filled it in when they built the house and then from the front it rolls down to Birchwood Lane.
I see. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions? Um, are there any members of the community that would like to be heard for or against this application? Having heard none, um, I will open, uh, the floor up for a, um, motion. I will take this matter and, uh, make a motion myself, um, to approve both variances that are pending, both the side and rear yard setback, uh, variances. I find that the applicant, um, the benefit that the applicant is seeking to achieve cannot be feasibly met, um, on this property under the circumstances in any, uh, alternative method. Um, I think that the benefit that the applicant has articulated, um, of, uh, wanting to age in place and create, uh, an environment in his home to allow for that is something that we've, as a board, have frequently recognized as appropriate. Um, I believe that the, um, the applicant has taken pains to make sure that the, the enlargement of this shed will not have an undesirable, uh, effect on the neighborhood. To the contrary, the applicant is, um, taking pains to make sure that it's consistent with the existing structure, which has been maintained, um, by the applicant. And, uh, it's my belief that they intend to use, um, high-quality materials and construct it in a way that won't have an undesirable, uh, effect on the neighborhood. Um, I do believe that, um, the, the, the application is substantial, um, but I don't believe there's going to be any other, um, undesirable physical or environmental effects. And, um, while this, every application to a certain extent is self-created, I think the applicant, uh, articulating, um, the need for a place to, uh, store, uh, equipment to allow, uh, himself and his, uh, wife to enjoy the property in the future outweighs any, uh, self-created hardship. So balancing those factors, I believe they mitigate in favor of granting the, both variances. Um, having made a motion, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to second your motion for everything you said and I want to applaud the applicant for all the things they tried to do and keep the green in the back of the yard and et cetera.
A motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Um, hearing none, Linda, we go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
I vote yes, but I do want to note that while the benefit may be achieved by another means, it would not be desirable for the neighborhood. As my colleagues have noted, you've taken pains to, uh, maintain the existing structure and continue the character of the neighborhood. Uh, and while it is substantial, uh, I also think it won't have adverse environmental effects. Uh, so I vote yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
You've indicated to us, uh, the neighbors have no objection and I am particularly, although with many other factors, I'm impressed with the fact that you're going to be maintaining the, a unique nature of the look of the shed and, and in particular, the, the D and M. And, and for the reasons, uh, stated by my colleagues, I vote yes.
Mr. Stein?
I'm going to vote yes for all the reasons stated. I can tell the shed means a lot to you guys and keeping its, uh, nature there. Um, and I, I'm glad that you're going to transplant those plants there because they look, they do look nice in front there.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, for all the reasons stated. So, um, Mr. and Mrs. Anthony, your variance is approved unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Linda, we call the next matter, please.
Appeal by Stephen and Katie McCutcheon for a variance from Section 220-53B and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1461 Clifton Park Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district to construct an addition partially within the side yard setback. Section 220-53B allows an addition to a non-conforming residential structure, which brings the addition into non-conforming side or rear yard, no nearer to the side or rear property line than the existing structure and no nearer than half the distance specified in a particular residential zoning district. Section 220-13 Schedule IC requires a side yard setback of 15 feet. The existing house is six feet, six inches from the sideline. Therefore, seven feet, six inches becomes the minimum required side setback. As proposed, the addition will be six feet, six inches from the side property line. Therefore, a one-foot side yard setback variance is required. 16 notices were mailed out, one response.
To whom it may concern, I am writing in support of Stephen and Katie McCutcheon's appeal for a variance in relation to their planned addition at 1461 Clifton Park Road. We are their immediate neighbors to the south at 1457 Clifton Park Road and own the property on the other side of the property line in question for this variance. We have no objection with Stephen and Katie's construction plans and fully advocate for their appeal to be approved. We look forward to their project and as neighbors will benefit from their planned improvements. Please contact us with any additional questions or concerns. Sincerely, John and Liz Bridge, 1457 Clifton Park Road.
Thank you, Mr. McCutcheon. You've heard me say all night, uh, you have an election to make. Uh, do you want to proceed or would you like to carry this over to the next meeting?
I'd like to proceed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your, uh, your application, um, what the basis for it is, um, what steps you've taken, uh, to mitigate it?
So we are looking to add about a 12-foot structure to the back of our house. As far as mitigation goes, we can't go to the right side because there's an impassable driveway right there. And we've already come in a foot on that side to avoid having to move, uh, the current power lines that are there. And so we're looking for the one-foot setback on the left side of the house. And there's already a porch there, so that, there's already a current structure there. We're just extending it back into the property by another about six feet.
And what is the, uh, what is the purpose of the addition? What are you seeking to?
We are looking just to add, to enlarge our family home. Um, we have two young girls, a dog, we're just looking for some more space. We, um, we've been living in Niskuna since 2008. We love the community, um, don't really want to leave and this would provide that additional space that we would need to, you know, keep our family and, uh, in the home and stay as, uh, Niskuna residents.
And if you wouldn't mind, uh, if you grabbed the microphone, if you could just go point out exactly on the map up there where the addition is that you're proposing? I think, I think I know, but I always want to double check here to make sure that we're...
We did also, sorry, um, we submitted pictures and everything. I think, uh, we submitted several pictures that should have been emailed and then, um, my neighbors to the right side also submitted a letter in support. I'm not sure, I, I dropped, I sent those all an email this morning to...
Mr. McCutcheon, hold on one second. Do we have any, just hold on one second. Do we have any pictures, Linda? So we, we don't currently have any pictures, but, Mr. McCutcheon, before we get to the pictures or lack of pictures, what, could you just let, uh, let, let me know where exactly, um, is the addition that you're proposing on that map there?
So, um, yeah, so this is the, uh, outlined in right here is the, is the addition that we're looking to make. This is the current patio that is already there and a current structure and was there when we bought the house in 2008. And so as you can see, it's only coming back.
And my understanding is the need for the variance is on the, uh, section?
Is on, is on this side here.
Correct. And you need, uh, a one-foot variance?
That's correct, sir.
And what steps have you made to, um, uh, attempt to minimize the addition to eliminate the need for that one foot? Have you thought about going back further, uh, in lieu of going out as wide?
Well, we, um, we don't have a very deep backyard, um, so we don't want to come out, we don't want to go further back into the yard. We do, we'd like to have some current yard. We, we are also unable to go to the right because we have an impassable driveway there that, our driveway goes all the length of the property. So we're sort of...
I, I understand the right, the driveway there. Um, do, do you have an architect that's been working on this addition with you?
Yes, I do.
And, um, have you discussed with him any other alternatives that would eliminate the need for the variance?
Uh, we did and I, I think, um, we would like to keep that because we're trying to gain as much space in the new addition as we possibly can.
So the, so the, the, the alternatives would have either eliminated a significant amount of backyard from your perspective, or alternatively, they would have, um, reduced the usable space in the addition. Is that, is that a fair statement?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
And, uh, my understanding is that all of your neighbors, um, to your understanding, I know we have one neighbor, um, who has submitted a letter, um, that you presented tonight, um, or was submitted and we, it's part of the record. Where's that neighbor located?
Um, he is on this side. They are on this side that we're looking for the variance in.
And of the other two neighbors that, uh, butt in your backyard, um, I, I think you've indicated that at least one of them has also indicated support, um, of your application. Is that correct?
Yes, they have and along with the neighbor in the, in the rear, um, I spoke to him and he was in support?
Okay.
Of, of the addition also.
So the, the neighbor in the back is verbally approved, indicated support verbally to you and the neighbor to the right of the driveway, to the best of your understanding, also submitted a letter we, we don't have, but in support of your application. Is that your understanding as well?
Yes, that is true, sir.
And, and no one had? Oh, okay. Can we read that into the record, please?
Um, we are the own, dear board members at Niskuna ZBA, we are the owners and reside at 1465 Clifton Park Road, Niskuna, New York. Our neighbors to the south, Steve and Kate McCutcheon, own the property at 1461 Clifton Park Road, which is immediately adjacent to our lot. We have learned that Mr. and Mr. McCutcheon have applied to the Niskuna Zoning Board of Appeals for a one-foot building line variance that will allow them to go forward with the construction of an addition to their home. As owners of the adjacent lot just north of 1461 Clifton Park Road, we have no objection to this variance request. Please contact us if you need, if you have questions or need additional information. Thank you. William Chapman and Jerry Heller.
Okay, Mr. McCutcheon, the, the only other, uh, question I had, there's been nobody that you've spoken to that's indicated opposition to this, uh, uh, request, this is your variance request. Is that fair?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board?
Uh, yes, I have a few questions, Chairman. Can you talk about the drainage for the addition? What happens with the rainfall that comes off the roof?
Um, it's probably going to be pretty current to what is current there. There's already a roof over the porch, so that drainage already comes down. Um, I do currently have rocks here, but I, um, I'm not sure if there's, I do have my contractor here too that might be able to speak more on, on the drainage issue, but we're going with the metal roof.
If, if you'd like to have your contractor come up and speak, uh, that, that's fine. You could just, uh, give us his name and address and we'd be happy to hear from him.
Tyler Conklin, Capital Building Company. The, so the addition, we will be putting in a full foundation, we'll have interior and exterior footing drains and we'll be backfilling, bringing in sand for backfill material.
Ms. Pacheco?
Uh, yes, so thank you for describing that and it looks like, uh, photos have been found, is that correct? Uh, that were submitted, so, uh, they're being shared up on the screen. So they're being shared up on the screen. That was it. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Just a couple of quick questions. Sure. Currently, how far is your house from the side now?
It's, it's, it's that same distance.
So the, the extension won't be getting any closer to the, to the side property?
No, it's not, no.
Okay, that's my only question. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Having heard none, are there any members of the community that want to speak for or against this application? Your contractor's on the edge of a seat now. I'm cautiously optimistic that he's not going to speak against. Having, having heard none, would anybody on the board like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairperson, I will make a motion to grant the approval, or grant the appeal as, as written. I believe that the applicant couldn't achieve the benefit by any other means, he definitely considered that. The neighbors, most sides, or just all sides have, are in the positive for this change. It's not going to get any closer than the current housing structure, so I don't see it as a substantial change at all. And I don't think that because the porch is already covered, there's not going to be any, any environmental impacts as far as water drainage issues or anything like that. So I, I move to grant the motion.
A motion's been made. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just a question, discussion on the non-conforming, Laura, just can you go over that quickly, just?
Well, you mean in terms of the pre-existing house being?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's just, that, that house just predates our zoning code.
Okay.
It's built 6 and 1/2 feet from the lot line.
Right.
If it was, and then our code says it can either go no nearer than the house or 7 and 1/2 feet, whichever's greater. And so because this house is actually 6 and 1/2 feet, then if you were to put an addition on it, our code would require you to move it in 1 foot. That's, that's where that's coming from.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Having heard none, Linda, would we go ahead and call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Your cap?
Yes, sir.
What's it say, all right?
A marine veteran.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your service. It has nothing to do with my vote, though. But thank you for your service. Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Stein?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Chairperson Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated. Your application's been unanimously granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good luck. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Take care.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to note that as a soldier, the, that cap did, almost cost him my vote.
So noted. Do we have any other matters before the board this evening? Having heard none, I'd like to, would anybody move to adjourn?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.